I will now call to order January 27, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Need. County Administrator Gary Smith, please call the roll.
Thank you Chair Smith. First, our staff support today. Shannon Bays, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call, Commissioner Scholl.
Here, I'm here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Present.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here, thank you very much. I will now lead us in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Shannon, for putting up the flag for us. Well, good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting virtually. Today, the Board has a very important event, so we will be adjourning promptly at 11:00 a.m. We've kept our agenda short to accommodate anyone who has called in to provide public testimony. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign in and sign up to testify. Registration for public comment is available online. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced during this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item, please?
Yes, Chair Smith, the first item is the consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, thank you. Elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. County Counsel, approval of a settlement agreement with Nathan Stonebreaker. Total agreement is $240,000 funded by the county risk fund, some of which is county general funds. Community corrections, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Portland State University for the development of Phase One to create an assessment report that summarizes key priorities for an equity plan. Total cost is $18,000 funded by the state of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. Justice reinvestment grant, no county general funds are involved. And disaster management, approval of facility use agreement between Clackamas County and Clackamas Town Center Mall LLC for COVID vaccine emergency disaster-related use of facility. This agreement has no monetary value and no county general funds are involved. That is the end of my list, Chair.
You're on mute, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Shannon, for that. Commissioner Fisher, you have your hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. I just wanted to make a comment on our consent agenda today. We have a settlement agreement with Nathan Stonebreaker, and I just want to make a comment that it's never, it's always very tragic when individuals are injured in any way, shape, or form. Really hoping that this settlement will allow for better security and healing moving forward. Best to you, Nathan, and we hope the best for you and your future. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Does any Commissioner wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? I will entertain a motion.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved for approval of consent agenda, and Commissioner Scholl has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Shannon, can you please call the poll? Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith. Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Wow. Believe it or not, the public communication is up next already. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business, which are properly the objective or consideration, and should be nonpartisan in nature, as the BCC is, a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon revised statutes and county code. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public communication at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at this time due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony. Shannon, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Yes, Chair, thank you. We have two people registered, and then we will allow people to raise their hands if they were unable to register prior to the meeting. First up is Christine Kennedy. Christine, please unmute yourself. State your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Christine Kennedy. I'm a resident of Clackamas County. I live in Lake Oswego, and I've lived there for seven years. And my background is in healthcare leadership as a registered nurse, and I have my master's degree. When I left my last position, I was a certified nurse executive. So I really make these comments with the best intentions, Commissioner, to all the commissioners and to Chair Smith. So anyway, just haven't been able to make any comments recently because of different things happening with your agenda. But I just want to say I do appreciate everybody's hard work, Chair Smith, and all the commissioners and your administrative staff. And I've come to learn a lot watching your meetings. And as I understand, each commissioner has one vote, and that commissioner, each commissioner represents all the people in the county. I listened with great interest to Tuesday's discussion about selection of how you're going to select community members for the Budget Committee, as I understand. So anyway, I just want to say, spent a lot of time doing budgeting and planning and prioritizing. And I would just like to say that your budget activity is probably one of the most important things that you do, and I just would really like to encourage you to invest your time wisely to make good decisions. We have really a lot of talented people in this county, and I think it's, as we try to shovel our way out of this dark time, it's really a time to use everybody, their talents, their cooperation, their collaboration. I would like to formally request that the COVID updates be added back into the agenda for Thursday's meetings. I found those very valuable. We're really in a very crucial time with the pandemic. I know we're all hoping, and Chair Smith, I heard your question to Philip Mason-Joyner the last time he was there, that we were going to have a sharp decrease in our Omicron. I just pray that we do, that we continue to see reduced deaths. I am concerned about the hospitalization rate for children in the state of Oregon. It was very high yesterday, I think the highest at any time. So anyway, we want to move forward and heal and work well together, and thank you for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Gary. What is the link that people can access on our county website to get the COVID updates? We'll bring that back. We're going to bring that back. I'll give you a chance to get that, and we'll announce it at the end of public testimony. There is a link, folks, that you can see that multiple times daily, as a matter of fact, for updates. Shannon, who's next?
Chair, the next registered person doesn't appear to be online any longer. And so if anyone would like to speak at this time that did not have a chance to register in advance, please use the raise hand feature. If you are on your phone, you can press star nine. Looks like Christine Kennedy has raised her hand, but she has already spoken, and so we're looking for people who haven't already had a chance to testify.
Gary, I see you posted the online link for COVID updates. Can you read that?
Yes, it's www.clackamas.us/coronavirus/vaccine. And if you just go to the main county webpage, clackamas.us, it's right there at the top of the page. You can find the link there as well. Chair, if I may, so the decision to temporarily suspend COVID updates verbally was both mine and Philip Mason-Joyner. The Board did not tell me to do this. I made that decision in consultation with Philip. We're the only jurisdiction that's giving weekly verbal updates. There is a written update that Philip provides that is posted on that website you just saw. As the situation changes, we, of course, will verbally update you, but that was my decision and Philip's. So I do want to state that it was not a Board decision for us to temporarily pull those updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Shannon, has anybody else raised their hand?
They have not. Chair, that is the end of my list.
Okay, thank you very much. Gee, we sure moved that fast through that fast. Gary, Administrator updates.
Yes.
Sorry, Sonia.
No worries. I was just, I appreciate the website. We usually also get, through our commissioners, a report that's sent to us. I have done a search on my email. I did not see a report for this week, and I'm really interested in what's going on with our children and increased hospitalizations. Gary, can you help me sort through that offline?
Yes, actually, I did not see that weekly email either. It should be coming to you every week, so let me follow up with Philip on that.
I really appreciate it. And tell Philip we know he's very, very busy, and it's okay that I don't have it at this very second. But thank you so much.
And just for a point of clarification, anybody can go on the OHA website, and it is hugely comprehensive. You can glean all kinds of data that I wouldn't even guess exist. But I do understand, if you're just interested in Clackamas County, that this is easy. Okay. See no other raised hands. Gary, Administrator updates, please.
Thank you, Chair Smith. So first, Commissioners, I have a piece of business for you under my update. This was emailed to you yesterday afternoon. It was posted online as well, and that is approval of American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA funds, in particular, for the fringe benefits for the essential pay award you authorize for employees. So back in July 2021, you authorized $3 million of ARPA funds to recognize essential workers, county employees, who worked during the early days of the pandemic. So while we paid that to employees in October and November 2021, what unfortunately we failed to acknowledge was the cost of the taxes of that payment and the public employee retirement system costs related to that award. The total extra amount is $1,782. We were going to bring this to you next week when we're bringing other ARPA requests to you. However, the federal reporting requirement for this October-November payment to employees is due on Monday, January 31st. I sincerely apologize, Commissioners. We should have caught this sooner to bring it to your attention. That is my responsibility. I am responsible for all staff, and we dropped the ball on this. Everyone's doing their best, Commissioners, everyone. So I apologize, but we need a decision from you today so we can report this on the report due to the federal government this Monday, January 31st. So the request is for you to authorize $1,7182 for the rest of the essential pay to employees here at Clackamas County for their fringe benefits, the taxes and the PERS cost. So I'm seeking your discussion, and if you approve, a motion today to approve.
I will open it up for discussion. I just want to thank staff, our crack staff, for catching it. That's all. It's just part of doing business. And we do have folks overlooking this, but I tell you, this monies that are coming in, we've never really dealt with anything like this before. And I think a lot of attention has been focused on the folks on the outside who are making requests coming in and how we can equitably address all those, which is going to be, I'm just going to say it, impossible, impossible to do. And so I think mainly, as you know, for the Board of Commissioners, our focus has been elsewhere. And we always leave paying the taxes to somebody else. But it's going to get done, and I just appreciate the efforts that were done to bring us. And we still are in compliance, and we are on time. Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, I too, when we looked at all the ARPA dollars going out, it never crossed my mind that taxes might be an issue on this particular expenditure. So there's no way around it. We have to pay it. Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? I will entertain a motion at this time.
I move approval.
Seconded.
Commissioner Schrader has moved approval for the next expenditure of the ARPA dollars in over $1 million. And Commissioner Scholl has seconded it. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Savas.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you, Commissioners. I really appreciate that. Since there is time, if I may quickly share some good news going on in Clackamas County that I've been sitting on because I haven't had a chance to give you an update in recent weeks. First, I want to recognize the Oregon Department of Transportation, who worked with Clackamas County to fund an important change to an ODOT-owned traffic signal at Foster Road and Highway 212 in Damascus. This change allows for protected left turns from both Foster Road to the highway and from the Bymark parking lot to the highway. Previously, drivers turning left had to yield through traffic, but having these dedicated signals creates a safer and more efficient way to cross this intersection. So thank you to the Oregon Department of Transportation and our county staff, who helped make this roadway improvement for our community. Next, Clackamas Water Environment Services, or Wes, recently received a check of $76,500 from the Energy Trust of Oregon to install two new energy-efficient pumps at our Kellogg facility in Milwaukee. These new pumps will save an estimated 240 million watts of power annually, with the savings being used to benefit our ratepayers. Wes has saved millions of dollars for years by participating in Energy Trust programs, which helps agencies lower utility costs by training employees to identify energy-saving opportunities. Thank you to Energy Trust and to our Wes team for this excellent service. Next, Clackamas Dog Services received a very kind recognition from a resident who wrote a letter to the editor to Oregon City News. Bonnie wrote to Oregon City News, "My husband and I recently adopted a dog from Clackamas County Dog Services. I can't begin to tell you how helpful, thoughtful, and kind the county staff are. We now have a wonderful new dog. Thank you to Dog Services for saving this dog, Frankie, and helping him transition to our family." So thank you, Bonnie, for that public praise and to our outstanding staff at Dog Services. Finally, Commissioners, you are attending the North Clackamas Chamber Lunch today, where they're honoring women in leadership roles. And there are two county employees receiving awards. Shelley Perini from Wes is receiving the Lifetime Achievement Award, and Lynn Chacon, also from Wes, is receiving the Public Sector Award. So bravo to our two county employees for their fantastic service, and most of us will be at that lunch here shortly to recognize them. That is my update for today, Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are great updates. Anybody who's driven Highway 224 in Damascus knows the intersection that you refer to about the light. That is a really big deal. Thank you. That's almost a lifestyle values right there. You know, who would think a traffic light would be, but it is. Up next is Commissioner Communication. I think first on my list is Commissioner Savas. You're up.
Yeah. I want to take some time to, due to the number of phone calls I received after our Tuesday session, kind of ask our Board, or at least plant the seed, not really formally ask the Board, just plant the seed, that I really thought there was a lot of expectations for further dialogue on the options, sheltering options. You know, we had an hour. It went fast. And I think there was a lot of interest. I had a number of things I wanted to talk about, but that opportunity was cut short. But I still have that list of issues, and I was about to start that. I only felt it would take a couple, two to four minutes or so to read down that list. And I'm hoping that at some point in time, we can do that. You know, we have had some great conversations as a Board, good deliberations. They're very thoughtful, and I think that the public that watch our meetings really respect that, really, not only respect, but expect that. We actually have good conversations, and we work together with courtesy, with respect, with decorum. That's what people expect out of us. And I think I was raised with the belief, or being taught, you lead by example. If you want to be treated well, you treat others well. So I really think it's incumbent upon us, you know, and even our citizens the best as possible when they speak to us, that everyone's respectful to one another. I was just raised on that, believe that, and practice that. So I'm really hoping we can have more constructive discussions on things that are really at the top of mind for a lot of people. People are very concerned about the people that are on the street, the homeless, the growing number of homeless people on the street, and it really deserves our utmost attention, like never before. And I really appreciate my colleagues here today, past colleagues from the previous commission and before, that supported moving forward with the veteran shelter back when I was really trying to move that forward as an example. Not, of course, we love our veterans and we respect our veterans. It's just absolutely wrong to have people who fought for our country be homeless on the street. So veterans, you know, first and foremost, is very important to us. But that project was more, you know, it was also a lot about how to shelter and how to shelter without having negative impacts. And so that it works well with the community, and it's a positive benefit for everyone involved. And I think we can do that. We've modeled that. We've seen models where it works, and we, of course, which makes a newspaper often, we've seen models where it doesn't work. We don't, we see sheltering or homeless camps that not, I don't think people want to see or expect anywhere in their community, let alone Clackamas County. So I think we can do it. I think we can do it right. And I think having that, a good dialogue about that, a respectful dialogue about that is overdue. You know, I keep on bringing up, it was something I was hoping we could do in October, September, October, and I'm hoping we can still do that. But we only scratched the surface, and I'm hoping staff could come back sooner rather than later, and with some opportunity again. And maybe we mark, you know, an hour and a half or two hours, frankly. I think it's that important. It's certainly important that goes out in our community. Last week, I was not able, because of our meeting ran so long, to talk about the latest and greatest on transportation and tolling and what's going on there. Extremely complex, but a lot of moving pieces of this, a lot of interest in this. We have regional, we have diversity, almost everyone in the region with us on saying to ODOT, "Sorry, but your current proposal is not acceptable. It doesn't work for Clackamas County. It doesn't take care of the safety issues, does not address the impacts of local neighborhoods. You know, interstate traffic shouldn't be on our local roads. It belongs and should stay on the interstate." And the complexity with what that is, that the studies that ODOT is doing currently don't appear to really provide the diversion relief that we're after, which is caused by congestion, which is the purpose of really taking care of those bottlenecks, those poorly designed interchanges up on Abernathy Bridge and so forth. We support the project. We support it for all the safety aspects, the seismic aspects. But the current tolling scheme is just flat unacceptable. And, you know, everyone, all the mayors, not just in Clackamas County, but everyone I'm hearing from, from Willoma County and Washington County as well. So we've got regional support for this. I'm working hard. I appreciate the support of my colleagues on being the point person on this. I appreciate Commissioner Scholl, you know, following in a meeting here earlier this morning on Connect Oregon, which is really about freight, airports, and our port-to-port our waterways, where shipping containers come in, and our critical supplies. So that system and transportation needs to work well. Housing, you know, that's the other topic, I think, is of importance. You know, it's nice to know that we have a lot of projects underway in Clackamas County and throughout the region. But we need to find and do things that kind of address the affordability aspect so that our younger generations, people that are starting new families, can afford to buy a home and live the American dream. I think that affordability is getting farther and farther out of reach, and we need to do everything we can to make housing affordable. And last thing I think we need to do, I know we've talked about it. We really haven't marked a lot of time for it, but I think that it will show commitment if we could spend three or four hours or a day, or maybe two days, like other jurisdictions do, and really have a quality retreat. We're overdue for a retreat, and it needs to be a substance, I think, now more than ever. And I think our citizens deserve, frankly, to have their elected leaders work together in a positive, constructive way, a respectful way, one in which we could all shine. And I don't think people would stand for anything less than that. Those are my comments for today. Thank you.
Hey, Gary. We have several housing slash homeless meetings scheduled. Do Commissioners get in their emails a copy of the green sheet to see the schedule in advance?
They have not, but we will definitely, actually, they do. We do send, we haven't sent that to them recently, but we have in the past, and we will continue, reinstate that, yes.
And there are many, many housing topics coming up that will address the homeless issue. So I do think that as this Board, we're working on that probably as much as any prior commission ever has. And we have some opportunities out there, and we have some reorganization efforts going on. And to your question, Commissioner Savas, I'm very proud to serve with my fellow Board of Commissioners. I do think we're working well together, and I look forward to that list that you said you wanted to give each Commissioner last week. I would take that under consideration and consider it a priority. Just type that out, send it to us, and we can have it up for a discussion item. We'll just let Gary know.
Chair, if I may, just briefly, that's not what I said. I mean to be respectful here. I said throughout the day that morning, I would really like to verbalize and explain those things. I do not have a well-prepared list that's ready to send or any of that. I think it needs some explanation. But I thought the purpose of that was to broach, to verbalize all the points on that list and discuss them at a table in public so we can figure out and help staff, so staff can understand what it is we're trying to accomplish.
And I think that if any Commissioner wants to send staff an email with additional points, any of us are free to do that, and we can bring it back for discussion. But as you know, it's very difficult if we dump 50 different points on our staff for them to filter that out, because the staff is trying to make five Commissioners happy. And I'm just trying to work through this the best I can with the scheduling opportunities that we have available. Up next, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning. Last evening, I was on the Metro Policy and Advisory Committee meeting, IMPACT. And what I wanted to share with you this morning is that the sentiment, like Commissioner Savas had mentioned earlier, throughout the region, and especially in Clackamas County and Clackamas County cities, against tolling is becoming more and more, they're becoming more and more irritated at the failure of ODOT to deliver answers to the questions that these communities have had for at least the last year. I remember a year ago, Commissioner Savas working with Metro and ODOT to get answers, and here we are, a year later, despite all his hard work, we're still asking the same questions. Metro and ODOT indicate that 3 March is the date that they want to do a vote on the RTP. on the RTP MTIP amendments. And Commissioner Savas has indicated that we need to extend that to 3 April, sometime in April, to give time for OTC to work on coming up with a plan. So I would encourage residents of the county, contact your state rep, contact your state senator, and express your views. We're all very concerned about this tolling, and we're all very anxious to get some answers from ODOT. The next thing I'd like to pass on to the folks of the county is that the Mount Hood National Forest has relaunched a progress or a plan to remove hazardous trees from 152 miles of roads in Mount Hood National Forest, and they're asking for public input. So if you've got a comment to make, contact the Mount Hood National Forest there in Sandy. They're online. You can make your comment online. Let them know your feelings about getting those roads opened so they can be accessible to the public for recreation and also for fire safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Scholl. Up next, Commissioner Schrader.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's good to be here with you today. I just wanted to talk about a few things. Let me actually give a shout out to one of my former colleagues and friends who was on the commission with me and is now a state senator. That would be Senator Kennermer. In response to the tolling issue, he is introducing SJR 204, which is a constitutional amendment to allow a vote for the public when it comes to tolling. I think he understands the issue. He was actually one of our big transportation champions when he was a Commissioner many years ago, and as well as the rest of the Clackamas County delegation. He is looking, he is really listening to us very earnestly. And indeed, this morning, we did have a meeting with all of our legislators from Clackamas County. They have a coalition where they will get together and discuss what they're doing and work with one another in a very collaborative way, in a bipartisan way. And we did review today a number of their bills. And another bill that Commissioner Kennermer is introducing on behalf of Clackamas County is Senate Bill 1589, which is the Newburgh Pool in the Willamette. We've had some major issues with wakeboarding and actually the deterioration of the banks of the Willamette River. I was actually with him when those folks talked to us, and we actually went out to visit the areas where this deterioration along the banks of the river is happening. So he is also addressing that problem or that issue that we're dealing with. The other thing that I really was very happy to learn this morning is that the governor evidently is going to have a workforce bill called Future Ready Oregon. And I think that is essential. It will certainly help Clackamas Workforce Partnership, is my hope. That is our workforce board, as well as the larger collaborative in the region, to make sure people are educated and skilled up for the new economies that we're going to be facing post-COVID, if you will, and all the other changes that are happening in the business dynamics that people need to adjust to so they can get good-paying, good-paying family wage jobs. And I also want to mention that because we're doing P232, or whatever we call it, it's the regional piece where we're really trying to get more minorities and women businesses involved in construction and get folks to be able to, you know, be involved in that, C2P2. And it's another workforce issue where, when we move forward with our courthouse, that we will incorporate some of those, a lot of that into what we're doing for building that so we can train new folks and get them worked into the trades. I know there was a question about that this morning, and I'm very proud that our board is really interested in diversity, equity, and inclusion in the workforce. And that's going to be part of many of the contracts now that we move forward with. And I just wanted to just let our delegation know that that is something that we believe in and what we want to do. Excuse me. Finally, I just want to let folks know I'm moving ahead in the Executive Leadership Program with the National Associations of Counties. I'm learning quite a bit about positive leadership in the workplace. And I'm happy to say that one of the reasons I wanted to do this, this was an initiative founded by General Colin Powell, who actually has recently passed away. But it's a privilege to be in a program that he, as one of the bipartisan leaders in our country on so many levels, has really helped institute. And I am learning quite a bit about leadership, positive leadership, how you engage people, how do you empower people you work with, and really coming in every day with an attitude that we can do this, we can make it happen. And leaders can't afford to ever have a bad day. Okay, that's one of the things I'm learning, so I'm working very hard on that because we have such challenging times right now. Some days, you do feel as if, whoa, this is not going to go well. But it is keeping us, keeping me upbeat, and I hope that my attitude is going to help our commissions continue to be upbeat. Another thing that happened to me recently, which I'm really happy about, is I did hear from the National Association of Counties, and I will be chairing at the next meeting in Washington, DC, the Economic Development Workforce Committee. So they've given me that opportunity as the vice chair to actually chair that entire meeting. And this is where we go ahead with our federal initiatives, both on housing and economic development, as not just Clackamas County, not just our 36 counties, but in, together with all the counties in the United States. So thank you. That's what I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Commissioner Fisher, you are up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. I just want to give a quick little, first, a quick little update, because I haven't let folks know that, because my husband had, I call it boosted Omicron COVID. He was very sick for five days, but on the sixth day, he was chopping wood. And so I wanted to let everyone know that he is fine. It did take him an extra week to test negative, however. I did not get sick at all, but I must say that my finger was a little bit sore from spraying the Lysol spray at him and around the house. Another personal note, I just got to share this because I'm just so proud of our schools. So many of you know I have three grandchildren. They've just moved back from Vancouver to Clackamas County. And lo and behold, my oldest grandson, Augie, who's in first grade, got COVID right at the time when he was looking at getting vaccinated. So the whole family has COVID, and really, they're not very sick, honestly, but he can't go to school. So we went, and my daughter's staying home and not going anywhere. We went to the school, and they provided for him all of his first-grade homework and a device for him to work on his homework while he is at home. And that is just amazing to, no fun for little kids to move into a community over the holidays, get really excited to meet all their friends, and then get COVID. But he's recovering fast, and I'm really proud of our schools and how they're working on behalf of my little precious family. Another thing I want to mention, Commissioner Scholl, I don't know if you had fun last night at IMPACT, but I am the alternate IMPACT, so I am behind the curtain. Nobody can see me. And so I had quite a fun time texting Commissioner Scholl the different acronyms and going, "Oi, you know, what's this? What's that?" It was definitely a team effort in that meeting. It was awesome. I really appreciated being there, and honestly, Commissioner Scholl is right. ODOT is not getting it loud and clear. Do not toll three lanes. Make sure that there is geographic recognition, the geographic diversity. Clackamas County residents cannot fund the bridge for the region. We cannot do that. We don't have a grid system. We don't have other ways of getting around. And this is not like this at all. And the pressure is mounting. I really appreciated. I don't know if the rest of you were able to participate or listen to Senators Wyden and Congress, and we were all there, I think we all were there, for Congressman Schrader. But the idea of tolling, you know, it is a regressive tax on people, and it's funded on those who can least afford it. And if we don't figure this out, we will not be doing a service to our constituents. I really appreciated Christine Lewis's, our Metro Counselor's, comment at IMPACT last night. She talked about, you know, you're trying to do two different things. You're trying to fund the seismic upgrades of the Abernathy Bridge, and you're trying to change people's behavior with congestion pricing. Those are two different things. Why don't we look at them separately? Why don't we use good policy chops and look at those things separately? So thank you, Commissioner Scholl, for indulging me. I did at one point send him a picture. I'm sorry that I did this, but I sent him a picture of my cat Shadow, who was looking very angry at the meeting, so that he could participate in my little virtual world while I was...
Thank you on that.
And then, just in closing, I do think we are working very well as a board. I think that the retreat that we had was good, that brought us all of our common interests and values are and why we serve. I do think it's always good for us to connect and do more as far as a retreat. I'm very thankful for the good working relationships that we have, and we are doing great work. We are focused on what our constituents are calling us to do. I am happy with the commitment from Commissioner Savas to say we really need to talk about homelessness. Well, I think our county administrator has the message. We are concerned about substance use disorder impacting our strategies. I am confident that our staff will be engaged and give us the information we need in moving forward. I have no doubt, because I've talked to her, Chair Smith is concerned about this issue. All of us care. We will get there. Commissioner Savas, I'm going to ask again. I want your list. Please, give it to us. I want to think about it before the time we talk about it, and your thoughts are valuable, as is all of our commission. And with that, I pass it on to Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. The comments that my Commissioners make, you know, I agree with all of them. There's no sense me repeating them, but one does bear repeating, and that's the issue of tolling. I have a monthly meeting with the mayors of Clackamas County, and all of the mayors and myself as chair signed on to a letter to the Oregon Transportation Commission. And we voiced all the concerns that all you have mentioned on tolling, congestion, you know, diversion, pricing, you know, we're first up in the queue, da-da-da-da. And it has been well-received. I testified last week in front of the OTC. They have heard us loud and clear, and we just have to keep the pressure on, and we have to keep the lines of communication open so they understand, very much understand, you know, how the effects will have on us. I want to thank my Commissioners and Gary Schmidt for approving a request from me to be a sponsor to the United States Navy for the commissioning of the USS Oregon, a brand-new nuclear submarine that will be commissioned in May of this year in Connecticut. And the money goes toward support for the submariners who serve on that, items that fall through the cracks that the US Navy doesn't provide for. And a lot of times, these missions, they go on there for many months at a time, up to six to eight months, and that's in peacetime. And they have absolutely no communications with their family. And as Shannon Bayes was telling me, her husband was a submariner, and she had to write her letters, and she couldn't hardly say anything. You know, you can't say, well, you know, so-and-so, you know, fell and broke their foot, because you can't relay that because it might distract them from their duties. This particular submarine is very, very technical. It's one of the most advanced ever built in the history of the US Navy, and the staff aboard is very technical, and so their attention to detail is really important. I thank the Commissioners for becoming an Admiral sponsor, the top sponsor on that. And I will be bringing back more information to that as it comes up. This is our last meeting in January, and it's also my one-year anniversary as your chair. And sometimes it feels like I've only served five minutes, and sometimes it feels like I've served 50 years. And you know what I mean by that. We've had such trying times. We've had to really perform and do duties that none of us ever thought we would have to do. And I learn every day. I try to represent as broad a constituency as I can. Every Commissioner has a voice. Every Commissioner has an opportunity to effect change and to affect policy. And I like that in us. I learn different points of view that maybe I didn't have when I came. And I was in the legislature. Gee, I thought, you know, I knew something. So it's just really a good opportunity. And just for the public knows, your Commissioners work very, very hard on days that we are not on camera, presenting to you, to bring forward the best. And we iron out stuff, and we go back and forth, and is this going to work or is this not going to work? And it truly is like making sausage, and a lot of times, it's not that pretty to see. But this is America. This is the United States, where we have open public meetings, and we have freedom of speech, and that will always be at forefront to you folks. We have a very important meeting, a gathering, that we'll be leaving soon for the Wilma Awards. I'm thrilled to death, just thrilled to death, that women in leadership are being honored in our county. And this is an idea that came from the North Clackamas County Chamber Leadership Counselor, whatever they call themselves. And I think maybe Fred Charlton, a former fire chief, was one of the founding members. So this idea came from a man, and thank you for that. Thank you for that. And so we're going to have a lot of fun with that. It's in person. Yay. I can't wait to go out and see people, and I will see all of my Commissioners there. Shannon and Gary, thank you for your attendance today. And hearing no other further business before this board, we are adjourned.